It is with great sadness that we announced item four to accept the recognition of Mark Mizer from the Cedarburg School Board. Back around 2012-ish, Mark started showing up to some meetings and, you know, stuck around a little bit. And lucky for us and the people at Cedarburg in 2013, he ran, was elected. And can't say enough about Mark, his work ethic, what he brings to the board as far as different perspective, never swayed by anyone anything unless it made sense. And seeing Mark change his mind on things, but seeing Mark change other people's minds. Just a great asset for him and people at Cedarburg. And he will definitely be a man.
Thank you.
So with that said, does anyone else have anything we'd like to say? We could turn this into a Dean Martin roast.
I'd like to say something, it's okay. And it's, you know, I thoroughly enjoyed this three-plus years. It is really a great event, a privilege to serve this board. I have so much respect for the teachers of this district and all the administrators and Todd and the water team and this district leadership team. It's just been so much fun to serve and I look forward to it. Every month and even the PNF meetings have been fun. With your leadership and Chris, your tone that you bring to these meetings and their upbeat and this district is such a great place. And it's, everyone here has the hearts of kids in mind and certainly the accountability of the taxpayers and the community. I just think it's a, it's a great organization and it's got tremendous momentum. And again, I'll miss it, but it was a lot of fun, so I appreciate it.
You want to show a part?
I will. I heard Cedarburg is playing hockey in Alaska last year. I heard that anyway. So, there you go. So, I would be there. I don't know.
Come to bands when you're going in.
We need to save some money on lodging, so. Got a basement then? So what we have here for you is class gavel, those Mark Mizer, thank you for your years of service, school board, 2013, 2016, Cedarburg School District.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Good luck. Good boxes. And for those of you that don't know where Mark's going, would you like to share any of that?
Yeah, I accepted a position to take over the marketing and advertising department with QuickTrip, which is a convenience store chain, which is privately owned, growing like crazy, about 450 locations in Minnesota, Iowa, Wisconsin, hoping to double their footprint in the next 10 years, 30 or 40 stores. So, you know, do me a favor when you're traveling around the state.
Get some caffeine, Karuba.
Exactly.
Tornado.
Maybe COVID or two.
It's a blazer.
It's a blazer. So, yeah, it's, it looks like it's gonna be a fun opportunity, great culture, which I really like, kind of getting out of the publicly traded companies into the private sector, it'd be a lot of fun too, so I look forward to that.
All right, Chris. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Is your office convenient? I QuickTrip them across. Cause I'm very familiar with that QuickTrip.
All right, they put me right next to the restroom because it's small.
Yeah. Right next to the.
I'll be looking for you too. I'm gonna walk in, I wonder if you might be here. Yeah, I'm telling you, I'm so interested in marketing and advertising, I'm actually gonna be managing that store.
Nice. I do this store. Well, thank you for everything. All right, resolutions and recognition?
Sure. This evening we have Dave Aswahi, he's the middle school band teacher, and he's here to say a few words about our guest pianist here this evening. We certainly would like to congratulate Webster student David Lu. He received the best piano solo middle school division for being recognized as one of the top student composers in the state of Wisconsin as part of Wisconsin School Music Association Student Composition Project. David submitted an original musical composition titled Dogfight Rad. The award ceremony is Saturday, the Saturday, August 1st, at the Wisconsin Center for Music Education, Wanaquie, Wisconsin, and we want to congratulate Dave. And Dave was gonna say a few words about Dave, and then Dave's gonna conduct his or play his piece.
Too many days. Good evening, guys. This truly is an honor for me to be here and to do something like this. To me, it's kind of reminded me why I love my job so much. Students like David, I met him four years ago as a young fifth grader at Dorson Elementary School. He came to me as a fresh band student. And from the first day, I could realize that this kid is going to be a challenge for me to keep busy because he was just very important to creativity. Fifth graders are a certain level, and he was above a high school level when I first met him in fifth grade. Throughout the years, he's really cultivated a wonderful sense of creativity through his composition. And I thought, what better way to honor that than maybe try to get involved in a state level competitions here. And I had really no idea what to expect because we haven't really entered too many into this competition before. I was just hoping maybe he placed, and then when we found out that he actually won the whole thing, we were just elated. And he's gonna be honored this Saturday with his parents in Wanaquie at the WSMA headquarters. I just wanted to share with you a very little sip at the table with me. On behalf of the Wisconsin School Music Association, it is my pleasure to congratulate you and your student David Lu on receiving an award for submission in the 2016 WSMA Composition Project. You, your student, your student's family, and school officials are invited to join us for the student composition award reception on Saturday, held at the Wisconsin Center for Music Education, Wanaquie. To further celebrate this accomplishment, a press release will be sent to your local newspaper following the event, including a photo of the award recipients. In the interim, please advertise this achievement with your school community, colleagues, and officials. This type of program not only honors the students, but the entire educational community. It's a great pleasure that I introduce you, playing his original composition, Dogfight Rad, David Lu.
(Applause)
You don't have to be home, I guess we know you can stay a little bit. We've got questions today.
How'd you come up with the name? I know it's, it's kind of ragged, some music, but Dogfight Rad.
Well, because in the beginning, it was like Eric, it was like a chromatic scale down, so it kind of sounded like Eric playing.
How long did it take you to compose that?
Well, I was in the middle of playing piano, and then suddenly I had an idea, so I rushed it to my bedroom and then started making it. It took about two hours the first day, and then I thought I could add more, so I took another few days to add more stuff into it. Yeah.
That's marvelous.
That's a very good mark. Have you written anything else?
Well, I've written a lot. I've written like instrument songs, and I've done electronic songs, yeah.
He brings something new to me almost every couple of weeks, ever since the seventh grade.
Stop by anytime, we love it here. That was fantastic.
Thank you very much, David. I'm sure we'll hear more about you.
Thank you, David.
Enjoy the event.
That was great. Now, we'll move on to Mr. Kennedy, and hopefully he can do his nice job with the event, who David did.
I'll back to follow this picture. This is congratulations to the following schools, who had perfect attendance in the 2015-16 school year. CHS, Dominic Rolde, Jacob Evansen, Lake Bearden, Joshua Bowday, Benjamin Brandt, Paul Brandt, Allison Britley, Samantha Cass, Elizabeth Esser, Madeline Gessbe, Melissa Gwynn, Ryan Gregory, Noah Hefner, Ryan Hoffman, Eben Hotman, Tyler Hoffman, Joyce Yu, Alexander Knedrick, Patrick Knox, Connor Cook, Michaela Leach, Brandon Lusk, Jason Miller, Caitlin Morrison, Dylan Molson, Noah Picor, Dakota Rodman, Alexander Zidias, Eric Schindler, Samuel Schlechter, Joseph Schuet, Jenna Short, Madeline Zispar, Giovanni Trui, Michael Zabrowski, Sidney Day, and Webster Transitional School, Michael Daniels, Charles O'Connell, Alejandra Pavon-Guardi, Isabella Pavon-Guardi, Guardo, sorry, Genevieve Yang, Caitlin Wilton, and in part two, Travis Roof, Roof, and Ryan Purcell.
That is fantastic. I'd be remiss if I didn't point out the irony here that Rick Leach's daughter had perfect attendance. Rick himself is not here tonight. Running called out.
Takes half his money.
You can put that in the record if you'd like.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to the following all conference baseball selections. Christian Kadrick, first team all-conference outfielder. Kyle Jansen, second team all-conference infield. Johnny Gillette, honorable mention all-conference pitcher, Alex Cricket, honorable mention all-conference utility. Keegan Montarte, honorable mention all-conference designated hitter. Congratulations to Christian Kadrick, first team all-state outfield.
All right, moving on to item six.
Approval consent agenda. For you, you have the regular board meeting minutes of July 20th. See if we approve our roles as well as the budget. In finance, the board education members will review the district financial information, including the movie Financial Report and summary of accounts. And also ask for approval of the personnel report, which is on the table to the right, this updated version, if you want to review that. Also provide you with the updated statistics of filling in the remaining positions that we have.
Thank you. Before this evening, we have a number of additional hires as we close in on the start of the school year. We also have a few resignations for approval. We've asked for professional staff to approve the resignations for Amanda Hepner, Margaret Doyle, Laura Kalanahia, and Bart Coons. We asked to approve the play contracts for Nicole Arterinas, Annika Olson, Heidi Silverthorne, Kyle Kramer, Elizabeth Bergman, Robin Schley, and Christine Pinter. We also asked to approve an administrative contract for Janelle Thompson, the new high school assistant principal. And then among our classifying staff, we have Pam Singer, Christine Boone, Kim Janz, Jennifer Lane, Nick Van Wagenen, Mindy Cagato, Andrea Wardell, Kathleen Miles, and Michelle Anderson have left the district, and we have added Kerry Walker, Barb Bukiger, Don Gall, Julie Miller, Katie Cavallard, Allison Zane, Catherine Zanaki, Eddie Largent, and Jennifer Dolezar. We asked for approval of those contracts and the resignations, and I can let you know that we're two contracts away from having all of our professional positions filled. We're waiting for a couple of people to get back to us on a specialized position at Borson and the guidance council position here at Diesel. So those offers have been extended. We'll hopefully get those contracts back before the school is over, and then we'll complete all of our professional hiring, knock on wood. There's still a couple of weeks to go, and the hiring season is now, it's a new era in public school staffing. In the old days, when there were certain benefits in seniority, you did not see veteran teachers moving. And so hiring would generally be finished by the end of June, because you'd be hiring all the younger kids out of school, and you wouldn't have this domino effect. And I thought there would be a calming down of that after a couple of years, but it's not calming down. And we're seeing more and more, you know, teachers in their first five years of working are applying. So I think a lot of the more senior veterans have made moves and gotten closer to home, and so we're seeing a little bit less of that. But we are now in your post position, there's a very, very good chance you're gonna be coming in with someone from another district who's already employed, and that just creates a domino for all the districts now. And so this is gonna be the new norm. We will be hiring right up until the last day before school and potentially the first couple of weeks.
Thank you, Kevin. So we asked the board to approve the consent agenda presented.
Who would you approve?
Second.
No votes in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on, superintendent.
Thank you, Chris. What's coming around is an update on our enrollment, the district, I thought it would be important for the board to, to where we stand at the moment, given the fact that schools, it's our school just around the corner, and we don't have another board meeting as the school year starts. So everybody should have a copy of this, and I'm just gonna walk you through it very quickly, don't hesitate to ask any questions. At the top, going across from left to right, you can see that there's a 15-16 September count for our elementary schools. And you can see the regular dates, 2016-17 estimate, and these estimates are based on numbers as of today. And you can see the totals going from left to right. And right below that, you can see one row that says change, you can see the changes in the grade levels. Most significant would be that after a four-year-old kindergarten, where there's 128 students enrolled in 4K. An impressive number for us to be starting our first 4K enrollment here in Cedarburg School District, 128 students enrolled. And you can continue across, and you can see ultimately the difference, the change in the enrollment at the elementary is 149 enrolled, and that includes that 128, 128 4K. Do we see that, that change?
Yep.
And then if you're going down the left-hand side, you can see there's a 15-16 September count. Those are the numbers from last year, based on the, as it says, December 21st, 2015. The green coding there indicates whether they're under or over our class guidelines that the board had approved. So you can see in 15-16, we were under in a few degrees, those are the green highlights. If you scroll to the right-hand side, you can see 16-17 estimate, and then based on the numbers as of today, and you can see, again, by grade level, by section, by school, where we stand according to the moment as of today. So those green cells are indications that we're under the class size guidelines, and those yellow signs mean that we are, in this case, slightly over the class size guidelines.
So what are you gonna do with those two yellows that are over?
So the two yellows, we'll continue to monitor. If you remember at West One, if you look at West One, second grade, that two section is in red, and that was at 28. If you recall, it went from three sections in first grade to two sections in the board approved at that time to add some instructional aid support to those classes because they were up at the upper end of the class size guidelines. And it's certainly something that would be considered for those areas that are in yellow as well, because they are actually just beyond the guidelines of first grade, compared to 24.7 and 24.5.
And what's the top end for second grade?
So top end would be right down near the, in the lower left-hand corner, sorry, you can see, you've forgotten how to measure the lower left-hand corner.
Sort of a fraction of a...
Yep. The, you know, the numbers just be mindful that we'll know when the students show.
Yes.
These are students who have registered, some who were in the system last year, and they may have moved, so we'll know truly what the numbers are the first day, the first few days of school.
So then, I'm sorry, at West One, we have a 28, 25, and 27, those sections.
28, 25.
He's going second, third.
Class sizes.
Okay. So second, third. So anyway, I know if my kids haven't gone there, but I was under the impression that some classrooms are bigger than others over there, is that right? So are we moving some of these bigger class sizes into those classrooms to alleviate that a little bit more? I think, you know, any help that we can do with that, I mean, to spread it out a little bit, even in the classroom, if they are gonna be big, I would, I'd like to see an attempt to freely move around so, you know, we have the big ones in there, you know. And I know a lot of teachers have been moving their stuff and so forth, but I think we should really consider.
And Chris, just FYI on the classroom size. The typical classroom for high school even is 900 square feet. Some of those, although they're asymmetrical, those classrooms are 1160, 1100, and right around 970 as far as square feet, but it's not your typical square footprint. So they are bigger than 900 square feet, and they do use a little different breakout space in all those classrooms. They love it, they love those classrooms, they like the asymmetry over there.
Yeah.
So I think it's actually beneficial to have that in a different footprint, but they do have more square footage in all of their classrooms than the typical classroom does here.
Sure.
Or your typical rectangular classroom, which is throughout the other.
Great.
It's a good point, Chris, and we'll make sure that Katie, you know she has that option.
And then we would be, under ready though, we would be able to put A's in the two yellows as well as the 28 if A'd be.
So Ben and I had a brief conversation, I just learned into the fact that some of these classrooms we're trying to hire to make sure that we have the capacity and the budget to do that. And speaking of Al, there might even be an opportunity to do some reallocation of aid support, existing aid support. So we'll look at that first before we go and...
We don't pay money for anymore, so that's...
Yep, yeah. The other item I want to point out on this sheet, you can see moving over to the right, the new open enrollment, you can see it's in red, 2016-17, you can see the numbers that were accepted, and where they were accepted based on the board approval. The far right-hand column is the actual number that the board approved, total of 62. You can see we offered those seats, and we have 45 who accepted. Again, we will know once the school year starts.
Yeah, registered, they did come in, showed me the management that they're playing with here.
So then if you flip the page, I'll just highlight a chart on the backside there. You can see the vote for the district, these are kids that we're anticipating are being assessed, and so you can see the 15-16 counts, 2925, the 16-17 counts, 3090. So that's a difference of about 165 students. You take out the 128 4K, that's a difference of 37. And if you subtract, subtract the 61 OE, you would have been down 24 students this year. Just so you see how those numbers are working in our favor, and I think the board has done a great job of managing that and allowing us to have that autonomy to bring in some of the resources that we have to balance the classes. Although you see some that are above the ranges, we've been diligent, making sure that the kids that are there are not the kids that we want. If we are coming in, we can assign the order we want, unless there's a sibling, if they prefer the principal, the principal sometimes says, no, I'd rather be on the range to keep the suits together.
That's correct. Everybody that we try, we were careful to make sure that we balanced, we have places we prefer, but that was split a family, the family might not have. So we're trying to work it out, sort of kind of families as well as the health of the district with its numbers.
The 4K projection, what was the original projection, about 120, 121? I don't know, do you remember that?
80%? Or like 100? 100, yeah.
Okay. And this is upwards probably, so you can see it's, look at our 5K population is 162, and we have 128 come in, so pretty good percentage.
First, first year? Yeah. Excellent job.
Absolutely.
For all of the work at...
Yeah, I agree. I think, you know, if you look at the breakout, I mean, we'll sign these, you know, the logical way to do that, the schools are the smallest enrollment in that grade, so it's a great thing. Follow up on the A comment, the classes that are slightly overset, I think there's probably a good plan to start working on. I know Conrad City's only got two more hires, but I'm only saying you got four more hires right now.
Right.
Let's still keep working on it. Don't take Friday off.
We'll look. Yeah, and I, you know, it, for me, I'd really like to see you guys, see someone in there. And I don't know what that means right now, flexing someone that you've already had, you know, to see how it goes for the first couple of weeks, you get them in those classrooms, or, you know, after you do an analysis and it comes a little closer, you know it's gonna be that number, that guess what, we're just gonna do it. But either way, I'd like to see somebody in there to give the support for those numbers that are in there for. So please look at the different ways to do that.
Absolutely. We'll continue to monitor. Sometimes you find that class chemistry is, works in your favor. You can find a class of 28 that feels like a class of 15, because a class of 15 feels like 35. So I think once we'll have a plan in place, Chris, A and B, we'll certainly be able to understand what plan works best, which we'll advise, and that's what we have to consider.
Great.
So that's the superintendent, it's my guy, John Serbys, who's been doing a wonderful job in preparing the district and the facilities for the arrival of our students and staff. You can see some of that posted on our Facebook page, and certainly when you walk down the hall, you can see those halls are spotless, and you can feel a sense of pride when you step into the building or any of the elementary schools or middle school. And I want to thank John and his group for doing a fabulous job, and they're here early, they're here late, and they really hit it, and it shows in the pride that they take in the day and night.
And, yeah.
I noticed the exterior stuff, you know, going on in the summer, but today walking up this hallway and re-walking in, it was really noticeable, the floors looked so nice. I mean, it was so, you know, it was kicking, it was really nice stuff, everything.
And that's the stuff you see on the surface, there's a lot going on behind the scenes, some of the remodeling, the restrooms that are going on, the carpeting, and during the rooms for 4K. And of course, the largest project being the tennis courts that are out there, they're underway, well underway, and taking great shape. A little bit behind schedule, but rather not rushing, but they certainly get it done correctly to make sure those courts are open and wide.
And then you did some roof patching here at the high school?
We did patching at all the schools, and then we put a new section on E45 above the IMC. So, tore it off, put a new one on.
And then a new carpet, great.
The new carpet at Park View, or at Westlon, Web, let me get this right, there's four, five of them. So new carpet at Thorson, and then we're doing Park Views over Christmas.
It'll be nice, Dave.
She didn't forget about the color in time, so we, high maintenance over there.
Right, just go after the carnival, right?
If right after. We'll do it over Christmas break.
Did you do any more boiler work over the...
No boiler work this year. We have, we're kind of in a, when we do our roofing, we do our roofing, and then the next year we'll do our boiling. So just like every other year roof plan, we're kind of on every other year boiler plan.
Great. And then you did some of the bathroom out yourself.
We gutted a bathroom ourselves over at Thorson. That was just about complete. We got to put up the dividers, and then we're all set. Looks great.
And do you, Chris, feel like you can do that at more than schools?
We're trying.
I mean, it feels, could use your resources cheaper than going out?
Absolutely cheaper. We're doing a lot of this in-house, and most of our work is in-house. But we've got to stay within our budget.
Right.
Within the amount that we're working on. It just extends our plan out a little bit further. We wanted to take it on so that we could feel like we're comfortable doing this.
Sure.
There's basically nine to ten bathrooms that need to be completely gutted and renovated within our elementary schools. And if we're on a one-a-year plan, nine, ten years, you know, we're doing it without having to go to a friend. So I think it's just good use of our internal funding, and it shows progress in different areas. We're doing roofing, we're doing internal gutting of that. And we don't just replace the tile. We dug the floor out, we completely ripped out the laterals underground, all the urinal tubes, all the piping, all the water lines, everything's replaced. We stripped that whole thing out. And I'll, I'll have a virtual video for everybody to see once we get it all finished.
I think it's important that, you know, when you, when you have these meetings and your other meetings, that you bring it up.
Oh, yeah.
How you're doing that, how you're using internal people when you do the boilers.
Exactly.
How we're planning and saving money and everything.
Yeah, there's some times where I don't think we, I don't think we get on top of the mountain and preach enough, but we're also a little humbled.
We hired us great people, we hired skilled individuals to get that done.
Absolutely.
And the four K classrooms are coming along. There's enough noise around four K that the five K first grade site grade teachers now want their classrooms to look similar to four K.
We created a monster.
And I appreciate John's support of all the changes. There was some additional cap entry requested at Park View in particular. In a previous system, that would take a year for us to get that in place. John was able to rapidly address that, get that all custom-built, and just really appreciate his combination.
Great. Fantastic.
That's the end of the superintendent notes.
All right, moving on to recommendations.
Recommendations. First, I recommend the Board of Education accept a donation of five hundred dollars from the Marrow Medical Foundation and used by Cedarburg High School's engineering department for its robotics program.
So moved. Second, opposed in favor?
Aye.
Against? Won't you care?
Next item, I recommend the Board of Education accept a donation of thirteen hundred dollars from the Cedarburg High School Memorial Foundation and used by Cedarburg High School's engineering department for its robotics program.
So moved. Second, opposed in favor?
Aye.
Against? Won't you care?
Recommend the Board of Education accept a grant donation of four thousand dollars from the Westlon Elementary School PTA to be used for literacy initiatives at Westlon Elementary School for the sixteen, seventeen school year.
So moved. Second, opposed in favor?
Aye.
Against? Won't you care? So what is that, what's that going to be used for? As far as the literacy initiative, is that a one-time opportunity? Is it really going to, like, how about during the school year and using that way?
You know, actually, I don't know all the detail on it. I do know that PTA has been really supportive of the...
That's a nice suspicion, students. Westlon was one of the schools who did not have a bookroom up and running and was started off from ground zero. So they've been working buildings.
That's great.
Next item, I recommend the Board of Education accept the grant donation of nine thousand dollars from the Westlon Elementary School PTA to be used in new playgrounds, playgrounds for Westlon's school grounds to benefit the healthy welfare charity at Westlon Elementary School.
So moved. Second, opposed in favor?
Aye.
Against? Won't you care? Great.
Wonderful. Next item, policies. I think the next five items are policies. The board received these policies in advance. We see the couple of questions, and so we'll clear finals as we go through the policies. Many of the changes are subsequent, I'm sorry. I'm going to allow Ted to speak to them, because Ted has certainly led the charge on some of the, you can start with the question.
Sure. Policy twenty-three forty, field trips, you know, and other districts, sponsored travel. Just a clarification of what our expectation, that I'll let anyone speak to that as soon as I'm working with that for travel as well.
So you have a copy of the field trips and other districts sponsored travel. Probably what's most notable is how we have highlighted some of the definitions of the various kinds of trips. We've also highlighted who really has the lead for signing off on them. So starting with field trips, the principal does. When you go to extracurriculars, the principal, the athletic director. When you go to extended travel, it's myself and then Todd. And then we go to foreign travel, Ford. So it scaffolds its way up as the trip grows, its complexity. And probably the biggest, that's probably the biggest area to highlight for you to study.
So on that extended travel, that's the only other one that's overnight, is that right, besides foreign travel?
Correct.
And then that is just the approval. But typically, can you walk through, is that a hotel situation? My seat is basement in the cross for the hockey team. But, I mean, what, what is that exactly? I guess my, my problem is, and this might not be a problem, but it's come up before. We had students traveling, going, staying with other families, and they weren't able to do background checks. And we were accustomed to here in the United States, and it was foreign travel. So are there any situations that we ever come to in that regard, under the extended travel? Or is that, is that more of a structured hotel state type of situation?
I would look at, I've not seen any of these. This would be the first one that they're going to come through before they go to Todd. So I've not seen any examples, but I wrote on my side, you know, it's like a fine art strip, perhaps, of performance in Chicago that required a permanent stay in a hotel.
Right.
So it would be those kinds of experiences that would require it to be extended travel. You can't get home in a day, so it makes sense to spend the night. And I filter it first through me, first the principal, certainly, when I look at, I've been checking for chaperones and those details.
Right, so the...
The background check piece would be of the foreign travel.
Yeah, I would say it's the spirit of this is to have, if they, if you're, you know, with, under the extended travel is to, you know, being hotels and having chaperones and that background check. Something, you know, those things, and I know you guys already do, but they haven't really stated all that.
All right, so the administrative guideline would then flesh out all those details, so that's all part of your requirements.
There's been examples of this extended travel in the United States last year. I think, I think it was last year the Jazz Band went out in New Orleans and played in the marching band. Was it the Christmas parade in Pasadena or wherever? So, you know, those were all in a nice space in the United States, and it all went well. And I think in the past, those things had to come to the board. So that would be the change here, that we sort of see those only foreign trips.
I think, I think in the past, I don't know if those came to board, the online trips, I think, I think it was all those foreign travel.
I think they were brought up to us as if they were happening as courtesy, but it wasn't driven by, obviously.
Foreign travel was approval by the board, but people were being notified of ovarian travel in the United States by the Jazz Band. Smaller groups athletic, we're looking at all that for the success.
So we can continue on, I would just say, action on these items. We are asking the board to waive this, and take action on these, for the, for the, for the school year starts. We're able to make edits now, so you can maybe...
Any other comments or other laws or motions?
Yeah.
I'd make a motion that I approve the field trip.
I'll send number two-three-four-zero.
Two-three-four-zero, I suppose, is it?
I'll second.
Opposed in favor?
Aye.
Against? Won't you care? Moving on to item N.
Policy number five-one-one-one, eligibility of resident, non-resident students. This policy basically addresses private school, high school students coming into our high school and taking to courses during school year. We're asking the board to consider a change to that, of private school students going below ninth grade. Allowing private school eighth grade students, math students specifically, performing two years or above, which would be eligible to to take senior high school math courses. We received, we request from the community, two community members, residents attending private school, that their, their students are at a pre-level, particularly publicist level. And they want permission to come into our district to take courses at our high school. And so we're asking the board as an exception to that, to allow them to come in as eighth graders to take that publicist course.
Actually, you'd be looking to change the policy.
Change the policy.
Not to create, or to make exceptional.
Right, to change the policy as an exception to these particular...
So maybe an example would be that the...
Eighth grade, to move it down to eighth grade.
Move it down to eighth grade. Stage section of our policy allows us only at the ninth grade and above to let friends, so we would dominate the eighth grade.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that. I mean, of course, they're welcome to enroll. They want to make sure they know about that.
Well, that's interesting, because there are some school districts who do have such a policy and ask their parents to actually sign.
Oh, really? Do you want to reconsider? What's that?
The, how, I, I'm not against policy, I think it's a great idea. It helps kids in the community. How would things like transportation be?
Transportation is not provided for our private school students, and this, this board asks above the ninth grade.
They have to send them us.
Yes, yes, they have to grant a portion of the private school.
And so they're responsible to pursue their...
Correct.
So this is not neutral.
Yeah. This is space provided, and of course, any other exception to come into the school.
Are these residents in the district boundaries?
Correct.
Okay, so it's not just people that are sending their kids to SFB, or they have to bring...
Specifically said in the section of the policy, that's resident students. So if you're a draft and...
Yeah, but if they're, what if they're open and all?
No. That's it, it's probably just residence. Resident, yeah, resident draft. It would limit it to math, we haven't opened it up, because that was one of the initial conversations we had. Where do we draw that line? Really, if art views, you know, so we, very linear process, generally both can be accommodated. That's one of those that's hard at certain levels to start teaching with a very small private school.
It's to our advantage if you get students in early, it's accelerated.
So with everything, then it would be...
I do like your question on, how they, do they live in our... Heck, these people are more like, maybe taxes. Oh, really? If you lived in West Bend and you lived, moved to private school, and then came where it's right way around the system. So this is a very fair way to speak to students.
I'll move, I, I have one last question here. I'm not sure why I'm correct there, too. In paragraph eight, which we get, it says, "The district shall provide a free education with those students who are considered by federal law to be illegal aliens because of, as long as the law requires, or considered almost by statute of the criteria." Is that a requirement of federal law?
I can answer that. We, we went, we gave a, for this committee, the policy, we went through these, this was one of those language requirements that our statute of law requires. So there, we went through a lot of these policies, and that was one of the, I think that was one of the paragraphs that jumped out at us. And I don't know, you might not have been there that day.
I probably, I don't know.
But, yeah, we, we did have a discussion about that, and it was required language.
So we didn't have a choice.
That's correct. Right, right. Okay.
All right, so we have a motion, and before we get a second, and then motion Mr. Cur, the motion includes maybe the first meeting, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. President.
All right.
A second motion.
Motion second, opposed in favor?
Aye.
Yes, won't you care? All right, moving on.
Next item, item G, I'll take this up. Adam and John Custer's here as well to address any questions. And this one has been unusual, because we're asking the board to approve administrative guideline. Not a policy, guideline. Policies already been approved. This guideline will align with our policy, but it's a substantial change to our past practice. And thus the reason we're bringing this guideline forward to all the, to the full board. This guideline has been invented by the Buildings and Browns Committee, we received it back then. It had been invented by the PNF Committee, and initially started out at the, the old level, when we were revising policies. And it was determined at that time we should take a closer look at this policy, the policy and the subsequent administrative guideline. So what you have in front of you, seventy-five, ten A, the administrative guideline, is a guideline that pertains to the district facilities. What this guideline does is encompass much of our past practice and some of the language that the world will recommend that we have in the guideline. And the most substantial change is that we're going from six user groups, priority groups, down to four. And you can see that on page two of this administrative guideline, which groups would get priority one, status priority two, and three and four. The partner to this administrative guideline is the facilities' use fees. And you can see that's the next item in your packet. And so the guideline really does address the fees. And so what we're asking the board to do is to approve the guideline based on what you have in front of you, this is our work. And also then, we're going to ask the board to approve the fee scheduling. Annually, we'll bring the fees back to the board. That's per board policy, that the board approves the fee structure annually. So this will come back to the year, every year, if the fee structure approved. The guideline will be set, the administration has the autonomy to adjust the guideline, to align with the policy. But the fee structure will come back each year. You'll notice that there is a fee increase from what there has been. I think the last time it was addressed, I don't know, you can see it on page two, was two thousand five. Eleven years ago was the last time the fees were addressed. So you do see a fee increase, and the fee increase is really just to cover our operating costs. That's the cost of opening up the doors, turning on the lights, heating, cooling, cleanup, and all your capital maintenance.
Wear and tear, right?
Wear and tear, exactly. And so it's not a substantial change, but it's a change nonetheless. And going from six priority groups to four, you can see that there are groups that are not going to be charged, that are not charged. And the thought again is we are just looking to cover our operation costs. John, what did I add?
You encapsulated that perfectly. I don't know what else I could add. I'm here for questions, if there are any.
Priority group two.
Patient?
Yep, that consists civic groups in town, city, carpentry, private, neighborhood schools. So what's a civic group? And then further on down there, it says, "Super Youth Associations." Whose members are eighteen-year-old or young. So what would be a, you, this example of a current civic group or...
That was language that was in the previous, that we did not remove. I mean, civic group, I think, would be something like a...
Garden club or something.
Something along that line that we would, you know, if they wanted to utilize it, but they were in a rental form. Even the, the ban, the civic ban, if they would want to rent the facility, they would fall under that category. And they do. We currently have the ban that comes in and rents out our band room, and we charge them as what would currently be a priority to the user group.
And the Cedarburg Colts, did it as a rental?
Correct. Colts.
CDC.
Those all fall into that category. Are they a civic group? They're a, that's what we utilize as a rental. So all of those are in alignment with the same.
No, I mean...
Basically, what we did, we took out language from two groups that were... Basically, what we did, we took out language from two groups that were non-essential, it was seventy-five to fifty percent, and then it got to, you know, this crazy charge of whether they're actually residents or fifty percent non-residents, and it was never utilized. We never got into those priority groups, we never charged them, so we just simply eliminated them.
And you can see the progression between priority group one, up through priority group four, based on residents. And so you can look at priority group three, organized groups located, and see if the motion consists of less than seventy-five percent civic students. So it's a progression. So... The thought is that with the approval of the guideline, we would begin to implement the guideline, and our thought is within six months, we have this fully implemented, and it ties somewhat into the next item, which is the facilities' fee schedule. There are groups who have reserved the facilities currently, there are applications that are in progress, and there are groups who have yet to submit applications, so we're asking the board to grant the administration permission to get this fully implemented within six months.
Yeah, I would like to give them the time to get ahead of their budgets and things like that, so I'm totally fine with that.
Like, no, it's take that on balance, emergency. I think we had to do that kind of supporting.
It was an emergency.
That was, do you want some others, correct? So, yeah.
Who can, who can read professionally and do the like?
No, I'm good with the... So...
We do have a question, Mr. President. Tom, are there the coverages, or the law of insurance, who are we hiring?
Million dollars out of general liability, we're named insured, ten days advance notice, because they're going to cancel. Do we think about higher limits to protect us? Is that standard language?
That's a great question, Jeff, and I was questioning Ben about it, you know, what's industry standard with something like that, and John, I don't know if we had, we didn't have an opportunity to talk about it, I suspect that was something that's been our...
It's been consistent throughout. Yeah, we did not change that number.
My guess is that if it was a little higher, we could potentially lose rental.
It'll cost them money, so it's like insurance work over too.
Right, right, right.
And so I have to then just do a bit more investigation on that, to make certain that it was...
That's a good point, because there's a difference between, you know, I use the Colts as an example, Colts are a big organization, the change in insurance costs probably won't really impact them, but there are people who, before the CDC was formed, dads used to just form a bunch of kids together, go to basketball tournaments, and then you end up getting it under homeowners policy, and a million dollars you can get for two million, I don't know what that cost is going to be, so there's a difference if you raise it.
You're right.
Somebody gets serious, says a million dollars enough, I don't know if it is, but it's a kind of a...
That's per incident.
We have to look at it, all one, the same we can. Do I change the...
Well, if it's per incident, then we should specify that, because we've got a million dollars CSL that's combined single limit, their policy can have an aggregate limit as well, probably a two million dollar aggregate.
A lot of policies, and the policies that will be to the three, now they're one, they will want three, three with an A, and one is on the single limit, but there's not much charge differential, if we will all look at that.
So you're saying we're going to change that now, or do you think it is now? Go get changing.
I don't want to leave it like it is, as long as we recognize it, or come back and revisit it as an administration.
So we can make that change to the guideline, doesn't need board approval, or we're asking the board to, because it's a substantial change from our past practice, but we can go in and make that adjustment.
I wonder if you might also want to build in some flexibility, I mean, if there's a, the flexibility to ask for higher limits, if there's a higher risk type of use perhaps, is that the discretion of the administration to maybe ask? We've been a large organization that has involved some risk, they probably have, you know, five million dollar umbrella for their CSL, so it would make sense to get added on that too, perhaps.
Would you like specific priority groups, like priority four, was a higher limit for that?
I don't know if it goes much by the group, it would be by the type of...
The risk.
Right.
I mean, for example, we had the AGIT convention, not that there was any issues at all, but could there have potentially been something, there was people from all over the world that came to this, believe it or not. You know, that may have been something where we could request it, it wouldn't have stopped them from renting our facility.
Yeah, that's okay, Tom.
And we could have some manager, please, discretion of the administration.
Yeah, I like that. I think it's a very good idea.
So we'll add that highlight show.
So...
Yeah, I like that. I think it's a very good idea.
So we'll add that highlight show.
So... For reference, sorry, three million A. So with that said, does anyone want to make a motion, waiving the first reading, and I'll make a motion to approve the use of district facilities seventy-five ten, administrative guidelines, and the, also the facilities' use speed schedule.
And waiving the first reading.
And waiving the first reading.
Kevin, for two thousand sixteen, seventeen.
Right.
As discussed, it's six months of implementation time.
Motion?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Just a shout out, John makes a lot of work on that, John, he's calling us around for several months.
Thank you.
Next item is transportation.
Pages under transportation, we're asking the board to consider making adverties in the last paragraph, that said, "The board may authorize a superintendent to operate video cameras," we're asking that, audio recording devices as well, that are looking to control them, especially bus and car accidents, we'll see a change in video camera.
So this was discussed, Dana?
Correct.
And we pushed it to, this is back to policy then, so this would be a waiving of the first reading?
And the policy committee already approved this policy.
Correct.
Just not ready to speak.
I will move it. Motion?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
And then, policy eighty-six eighty, which deals with contracting for bus services, the, in the last sentence, "The board may authorize a superintendent to contract with bus providers to install videos slash audio recording devices," there again, is handled by the board.
I will move it.
I'll second it. Are we moving it, just for the waiving?
Yes. Yes.
That's fine, you're okay with that?
Yes.
You can all second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. All right, we carry one, and two, and...
And then the next one is, the board, we're asking the board, we're asking to change our compliance officer, we're required to have, we all have new compliance officers, the policy is listed below, we have care of the board, board, yes, our compliance officer, we are asking the board to also make the change to Kirsten Rose, the policy that requires us to list, compliance officer.
Against, waiving the first reading as well? I would, I would make a motion to move this, waiving the first reading.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. All right. Thank you.
Okay, here, board, Patty, you should have a copy of, about a five packet, or five sheet packet for the finance temporary budget, page forty-nine, it's like this. Basically, what I did is copy the style format that Karen used in which past, I'm familiar with that format, deviate from that, and a lot of this information you've seen before too, so there shouldn't be a lot of huge surprises in there. Basically, what I've done is updated the information based on time, I started here, I applied first, and then I added some additional information for your reference, in case you, either in the community, and then also a estimate of what we're looking at for the tax levy for sixteen seventeen, so those working for that first page with the projection of reconciliation. Most of those items on that list, like I said, you've seen before, when we've discussed the PNF, or our needs, some items that are down to the bottom, in terms of what we've been looking at for WRS, which is going to be increasing for two thousand and seventeen, some other estimates based on what we're looking at for benefits, and general entries for audit that we just completed, and then the committed fund balance that we're using for the times course, the L E projects, and then offset for K costs for sixteen seventeen. So as a whole, I think that we're looking pretty good, pretty stable for sixteen seventeen. There are some items, obviously, that are still hanging out there, they'll be in the monitor, it won't be a big piece of that, the information that Patty shared earlier is optimistic, if we look at adding more students through enrollment, or open enrollment, that's may have revenue to our bottom line, which would obviously give us some room in terms of balancing the budget even more so, possibly using less of our fund balance. Other factors would be how our benefits come in for our renewals, we have a calendar year renewal, right now we have partially a five percent increase for those, so if those come in less, that will help us as well. And then, as we hire new staff, right now I conservatively budget, all of them on family plans, so if they come in with a single plan or decline in weight insurance, that'd be savings as well. Obviously, there'll be more details next month in the budget hearing, because they will do the budget a little more. And you do a lot more information too, because we'll have a better idea of enrollment, since school will be starting, and then we'll be looking at the revised budget in October, we'll be able to set the tax levy, like, still plan everything for the upcoming year. Like I said, that second page in that packet reviews the tax levy for sixteen seventeen, and a couple scenarios that we could look at, based on different scenarios that equalize value. Right now, it's based on an estimate for July first from DPI, and the estimates basically vary the property values, either going up or going down. We recently received an estimate from our financial advisor, Bear, about property values, and right now we're looking to increase about three percent. What that would mean would basically is that the amount that we levy would be the same, but the amount of property value we could distribute among would be higher, so the overall, the average tax rate for taxpayers in the district would decrease, which would be different. So as of right now, we're looking at the total levy to decrease by a little bit, by about one percent, and the rate could go anywhere between two and four percent decrease for this year. Obviously, that's all to the board in terms of the final approval of the levy, but there's a little bit of flexibility in terms of where that's going to be set, you know, we'll start with one high number to manage. I also left some numbers in there for fund balance, and where we're at for that, at the end of fifteen sixteen, our fifteen sixteen budget ended favorably, we had about four hundred thousand dollars to our fund balance from the end of fiscal year fifteen sixteen, and then I kind of wrote it down based on the commitments we have in fund balances, to kind of give you an idea of what we're looking at there. Even with the committed fund balance for the LED project, which we have planned out to repay over the next five years, at the end of next year, we should still be around twenty-one percent, or this year, around twenty-one percent fund balance, which is pretty healthy.
And what's the board guidance for range?
Specific guidance, I'm not too sure, I haven't gotten into that, most of them require at least fifteen percent, that's pretty standard. Right, they all kind of vary based on, you know, specific district's needs and whatnot, sometimes they have enough money in there to not short-term borrow. Typically, if you have a high fund balance like this, twenty-one percent, that seems to be a good number, once you get above twenty-five percent, you start to think, you know, how can we spend it, or how can we use it a little better?
When's the DPI come in and ask you to allocate that fund balance percentage to twenty-five?
Yeah, typically what they do is, once you get above twenty-five percent, they just want a plan of what you're going to be doing, if they're, if they're something, they just want it sitting there, so it's a good thing that we're using the committed fund balance to kind of spell out what we're going to use it for. Another benefit of having a fund balance around that twenty percent is that it shows the district of financial, financially stable, so if we ever have to take on new debt, losing our credit rating would be pretty significant, so. And then the last three pages are purely informational, they're pretty much historical information for the district that you guys can use for reference. One looks at membership over the last twenty-some years, that you can kind of see how it ebbs and flows up and down. The next one's on property values, mill rates, and the total levy, you can see how that kind of went up and down. The mill rate used to be a lot higher before revenue limits were put in place, once revenue limits were put in place, it kind of capped it a little bit, so right now we're hanging right around the mid-nine, now the mill rate is a little higher, which is consistently below the state average for the district. And the last chart just kind of looks at some other numbers in terms of our revenue limit, how that's kind of went up and down, how this changed, especially since...
So what would that state average, mill rate?
Right now, it's just over ten dollars, for fifteen sixteen, it's ten point two five, maybe around nine point four, so. And that should go down a little bit more with property values and facing...
I wanted to touch bases to make sure I'm clear on this, but the analysis we did, this goes to the PNF meeting, week or two ago, you've done the scenario where, I think it was flat, property values flat, two percent increase, two percent increase, maybe even a negative one.
Yep.
So you're saying now, Bear is saying potentially a three percent increase?
Yep.
So you did a two percent increase, relatively close to that, right? Can you walk us through that scenario?
Sure.
So what the outcome would be?
That. Right. Scenario three of the one in green, kind of walks through the scenario, we're looking at, it's a two percent increase for property values, so as that goes up, you can see the total levy for all the scenarios remains the same, a one percent decrease, but if you look down a little bit, you can see the levy rate decreases to nine point five five in scenario three with a two percent increase, if it goes to three percent, it could potentially around nine point four for the mill rate, and then at the very bottom, you can see the typical app, in that core average home, around three hundred thousand, so that would be decrease, if it was two percent, about eighty-five dollars annually, if it's around three percent increase, it's probably a closer over hundred dollars decrease in levy for the year, so.
It's positive news?
Yeah.
I'd like to grasp a little more business like easier for you to...
Yeah.
Like I said, factors that'll change, that will be enrollment, if our enrollment increases for membership, that'll increase our revenue limit, so that kind of plays into the total cap of what we're looking at for state A of the levies, so I'm going to pull some off here, but right now I think it's a good possibility.
We'll have two PNFs in October and one in September, and we'll make sure that the entire board is divided to those, as we discussed on our last PNF, and pull through the process.
Thank you. Now, is this information on the election?
Aye.
And, we have a politics speaker, if you have. Very long, made reports, someone over a lot of PNF, do you have anything to add?
Just a last comment, because we'll have the one meeting in September, after the Friday notice come on, and then two in October, during the PNF, before we get through the budget process.
Yeah, those are important, if anybody... I know you won't. Do a quick, quick word for any questions you have, because we kind of, all the variables start to come together, and so we could solve the numbers, and it kind of locks in our budget, so it's a good way to...
Yeah, we've been, then locked to a lot, a lot more detail, it's been happening, it's been together, and what it looks like as far as, it's valuable, a lot of those.
We do have insurance committee meeting next Tuesday, and we're going to have our vendor for open coming and doing a report on our insurance data, so, of the information.
Everybody's invited, because it's huge.
Yeah.
All right, and then, we have opening, PNF committee, issues, and, so anyway, I'll be contacting you guys on that, as well as Mr. Miners, and others. be contacting you guys on that, as well as Mr. Miser's other responsibilities, including your luster's job, clerk, which I know Mr. Bruce has a lot of experience with, we'll talk about that later.
Hold on, I'm being Mr. Lee.
Don't move that one.
Is there a way for those?
You can mark it second.
Sure.
We are in notice on the agenda of open session for a part of school clerk, so that can take place at this time if we so choose, as you act on the area's recognition.
It wasn't motion, it was only a suggestion.
Well, we have a, we have motions now. If you'd like, for clerk, as noticed...
Is this like for the rest of March term issue?
Yes, this would be...
Life sentence.
This would be for the rest of, which would end the end of year. So, and as I was saying, it is noticed for open session, so what we would do is be moving it from the open session that comes after our term into executive session. So, does anyone have a motion?
I expect...
You figure you're gonna do it. Well, I mean, we're gonna do it later, we didn't do it now.
We're gonna do it now.
Is there anybody interested?
I'll look for it. I'll look for it. I'm not interested.
All right, so...
Let's see, who puts his motion on?
Who wants to?
I'll... In motion?
I will second.
This is my last point, sentence on this.
Thank you.
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those?
I'd stay.
Motion carries.
Thanks.
That's effective immediately, so you can put down your pen today.
Actually, I was gonna ask Mark to fill this, I'm gonna go over here.
All right, so we have one item off of the next, all right, so, I will accept a motion to adjourn to the session where we will approve minutes of July twentieth and discuss personality issues, step nineteen point eight five one, and C, consider valuation data, so in two, nineteen point eight five one C, consider staff employees performance valuation, or so in two, nineteen point eight five one C and E, consider administrative performance valuation, nineteen point eight five one C and E, reduce superintendent goals, so in two, nineteen point eight five one C, we will reconvene into open session where we will talk about, um, yeah, performance-based retention, support staff, employees compensation, administrative employees compensation, sixteen seventeen, do I have motion?
Some votes.
Second. Motion second, all those, well, discussion, anything you'd like to say, Mr. Miser, before we close this out? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries, thank you everyone, we're gonna adjourn into executive session and at some point after that, we will reconvene to open, but I'm kinda late, don't exactly what time that will be.